Trying to think, I didn't have it even checked out.
If there's your intention to speak tonight, if you please see the clerk before 7:00 PM. If there's your intention to speak tonight, see the clerk before 7:00. Major Robinson. This young lady right here.
Mayor, could I request for you to fix the cell reception in this city? It's, uh...
The department has five. Because we have state agencies in that building.
Yeah.
And they might know, and I said, you, tech, and I said, you might know. He got, he tied into the five, you know, the state agencies needed. And our, our end that was just too poor for them. It was just, they didn't have office.
Oh goodness. Okay, that's where, okay, that's where it is.
Is that so?
Hmm?
Oh, you're looking like I'm running late.
Oh, no, no, you're all good.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the board of ordinance meeting for October 12th, 2021. And we call this meeting to order that our indication by law had been passed to Mark Smith of Five Church at 746 California Avenue, Southwest, in the lovely city of Camden, Arkansas.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Just pray. Father, we just come before you tonight, Lord, and we just want to acknowledge you, Lord, for your goodness and for your mercy. Lord, there's not a single person here tonight, and there's not a single person that's watching online, Lord, that you don't love and have infinite care for. And Father, this is a city that you love because you love its people. You love the people of the city of Camden. And Lord, you desire prosperity for this city, and, Lord, you desire to lead us and to guide us, Lord, and to grow, Lord. And so, Father, tonight, I just ask, and I know, sure we all agree, Lord, there may be a lot of things we can't agree on, but I know we all certainly agree that we want Camden to prosper. And Father, I ask tonight, Lord, that you would lead and guide these men and women, Father, that the citizens of this community have elected to represent them, that you would lead and guide them, Father, Lord, into your perfect plan. Lord, your word says that man has many thoughts. Women can have many thoughts, Lord, as we always do. We may not even agree on everything, but, Lord, you said that you have the answer. So, Lord, tonight, I just ask, Lord, in a spirit of humility and unity, Lord, that we would seek you, and, Lord, your best and your plan for this great city. And, Lord, that the city of Camden, Lord, would continue to rise, Lord, continue to prosper, and to be a city, this shining city set on fire. And, Father, we thank you for these things, that all things are possible through you who love us and cares so much for us. In Christ's name that I pray. Amen.
Would you remain standing for a prayer? Our committed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is sancte, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, you may recede. Our long-lost friend, Mr. Robinson.
Lindsey?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Askew?
Yes.
McCoy?
Present.
Moore?
Here.
Brown?
Present.
Dance? Arden? Hey, what?
Present.
There is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of September the 14th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
The motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2021 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on the approval of the minutes. But what is the acceptance of the financial report for the month of September of 2021? Is motion to approve?
Second.
Is motion to accept the, uh, second, is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. That's, uh, second approved, uh, before my two, first second approved. We are preparing ourselves now for audience participation. Any individual who desires to participate in audience participation, we'd ask that you will please, before we get started, sign in with our city clerk. And those who have done so, she's gonna call your name. You have approximately three minutes, uh, to make your statement. Uh, for audience participation, you have approximately, we have three minutes. We have a timekeeper who sends ready, uh, to help us with that. The microphone is on, but it's for recording purposes only, so you're gonna have to hear it or tap it. And she's gonna call your name. Please come, state your name and address, and begin.
Mr. Mike Cox.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Charlie Allen, uh, for Law and Order for tonight. At the last planning motion meeting, I presented a case for rezoning at 1315 West Washington from RS2 to C1. It's a commercial building that previously was St. Mark's Church. That is approximately 1,000 square feet. And, um, don't really know what I'm gonna do with it. I've got, uh, several proposals. But, uh, for me to even market it, I need to rezonate for commercial use. Because it, it doesn't really fit the, the residential zoning requirement. So, I'm asking for a C1 zone, uh, so that I can, can market it and possibly use it for commercial use. When the case comes up, if, uh, y'all are willing to zone it up with you, I have copies here of all the zoning that, that you see that can be put in a C1 and given by the director. Thank you for consideration.
You have, you have copies of that sheet that you just offered, or is that just your copy?
Uh, I have copies for everybody that want one.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you, sir.
Can I be here if anybody has any questions?
As a matter of fact, you're ordinance 0921, you're the first one that we come to, so, thank you. I'll ask who's, uh...
Major David Robinson.
Good evening. Uh, this is just a visit, just to say, uh, uh, I'm the new Savage Army Officer in El Dorado. And we serve this wonderful county and great community. And, uh, I thought I'd do a mayor day and, uh, kind of talk about some of the things that the Savage Army does. And he, uh, graciously invited me to come today. So, just kind of give a little update. Um, I've got a little thing to hand you out. You have to just pass those around. Just kind of talks about what we've done in, uh, 2020. Uh, we've served over 53,000 meals, uh, over 14,000 individuals served, uh, in the past year, uh, within our three counties that we serve. Um, and, uh, we are always looking for partnerships, ways of, of working together, uh, with people within the community, like-minded people. Uh, the Savage Army is a church. My wife and I are both, both ministers of the church. Um, I guess I'm the head and she's the neck. She tells me what to do. Uh, but, uh, Mary, you laughing, I bet you know the topic. But, uh, we are, uh, new. Uh, we've been with the Savage Army for over 20 years. That's why we're majors. Doesn't mean we did anything special, we've just been around a while. So, we brought, bring lots of experience of working with different communities and, and doing different things together. And, uh, uh, we're looking for a great opportunity. We have Christmas coming up, uh, with, uh, bell season, kettle season coming up, ringing that, that bell. Um, and we are hoping and, and looking for volunteers in this community, uh, for opportunities to ring and to help raise funds that, uh, turn around and those funds come right back into the community. Uh, what we raise stays. So, uh, that just gives us more, uh, capability of helping people with rent, utility, um, food, um, and different things like that. So, uh, please, um, uh, register to ring.com. Uh, easy way to sign up, uh, sign up as a group, as individuals. Uh, but we are looking for a great year, uh, in Christmas, uh, this year, through, through the kettle program. And just looking, uh, forward to getting to know more people in our community. And, uh, I love the pastor's prayer about what a great community. Uh, I was stationed in fire and blood for four years, um, loved this part of the country. Um, was stationed in Conway, Arkansas for four years, and then I got shipped off to Lauton, Oklahoma, uh, for four long years. So, when they called me and said, "Your new appointment is El Dorado", the person on the other phones kept saying, "Are you there? Are you okay?" Because we were so happy to be here, and my wife and I just smiled and, and said, "Yes, sir." So, we are thrilled to be here, uh, and, uh, would love to hear from you anytime.
Let me reiterate two things. Number one, uh, in 2020, $15,000 came back to our community. Uh, and they also have mail-in, for some people from our community have mail monies too, Salvation Army. And they also have a homeless shelter, which we do not have, uh, here in our city, uh, that I know of. And so, this is a great opportunity for many of us, and I'm glad we've come tonight. I'm asking him to take advantage of some of the opportunities that will be forthcoming in our community to introduce himself. Uh, please get his information, invite him to some of our civic groups, to introduce himself to you guys. And we're excited, uh, to have you and grateful for working relationship.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And if you'll admit, uh, Major J.R. Robinson is in the back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. That's it, that's it. Look! For our mayor's report tonight, I just want to remind us that this month we are, uh, this, this month is dedicated to, uh, West Hampton. So, that will be a parade that's forthcoming in this month. I want to encourage those who are survivors, uh, to, uh, say a loud prayer. We, uh, that we support them, or that, uh, if you love them, that parade is coming up on the 22nd. Also, we have at least one more, possibly, uh, two more workshops for our budget that's forthcoming. And for those of you who have questions, we're trying to get all of those things dealt with, uh, so that when we come in, we can have a, a meeting that, that kind of flows a little smoother. And so, if you have budgetary questions or budgetary issues, we're trying to deal with them. And all of those meetings are open to the public. The next one is on two, on, coming up Tuesday at 6:30 PM. And by Friday, we'll be announcing who will be presenting their budget on that particular night. Uh, that kind of brings us up to snuff with the things that I, I needed to, uh, highlight. We're ready now for Mr. Jason Holschall with Stevens, Inc., Camden Water and Sewer Bond Issue. Is he answering the questions, if we have any questions? Uh, Mr. Richardson, uh, Mr. House, Holschall?
He'd like to make a statement, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's a pleasure to be back before you. I know it's only been a couple of months, but another opportunity has presented itself this evening. What you have before you is a possible refinancing of the water and sewers 2016 bond issue. Uh, believe it or not, the interest rate on that particular bond issue was at 3.13%. But given current rates, uh, we're estimating the interest rate to be approximately a 2%, which would save the utility approximately $250,000 over the life of the issue. This is a relatively short bond issue compared to the ones we've talked about previously. This bond issue, the maturity date is in 2033. Um, so, again, a relatively short bond issue. Looking at average annual savings, about $20,000 a year, up to about $250,000 total savings. So, again, wanted to present this information before you. Have you answered any questions, uh, you may have about this particular proposal?
I've one. Is there a limit on how often you can refinance this type of bonds?
It's a great question. So, every time we issue a bond, if you recall, what we do is we assign a five-year period, which is restricted, where you cannot pay off prior to that. So, um, in this particular case, that five-year period, as, or will expire in the coming months. Um, and so, we'll be able to, to do that. At that time, though, we will assign another five-year, what we refer to as a call period. That call date, when you can call bonds away from investors. So, um, at that particular point in time, we'll be close to, to paying off this particular bond.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? Observations, anything? Thank you so much. We have the old business listed. So, we move to new business. Who will introduce ordinance number 921?
Ordinance number 921, and ordinance of the city of Camden, Arkansas, rezoning property located at 1315 West Washington from RS2, single-family district to C1 professional office district.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Motion?
Second.
To second it? To suspend the rules, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Arden?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. The move and second, is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Roll call.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
All right, motion, uh, ordinance 921, pass it. Yes, sir.
I'd like, uh, in the agenda to move, uh, resolution 6921 up above the next resolution.
There's a motion to move resolution 6121, uh, as number two on our agenda under new business.
I'll second.
The move and second it, is there any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number 6121, please, presented by, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 6121, a resolution authorizing the offering of bonds to refund the city's water and sewer refunding revenue bonds, series 2016, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The move and second it, is there any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number 6121. We go back now to ordinance number 1021. Who will introduce it?
Ordinance number 1021, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, fixing the tax, the rate of taxation for the year 2022, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve? To suspend the rule?
Hang it up for a third reading.
The move and second, is there any discussion on motion to suspend the rule? All right, roll call.
Askew?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
The move and properly second it, is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Roll call.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Arden?
Ordinance number 1021, pass it. The mayor will present resolution number 6221.
Resolution number 6221, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Travis Daniel to the Camden Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
The move and second it, is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution 6221. We're now ready for resolution number 6321, also presented by, introduced by the mayor.
Please just minute.
Yes, ma'am.
We forgot the emergency clause on the ordinance for taxation, so we need to go back to that before we finish tonight.
1021, you wanna do it now, or you wanna go back? Do it now.
It doesn't matter.
Well, let's do it now.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on resolution, uh, 6121.
No, it's, uh...
1021. And enact the emergency clause.
Yes, I forgot about the emergency clause.
So, we have, we have a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the final ratings tonight. What we're looking for is a motion, uh, to enact the emergency clause on the ordinance.
I make a motion to enact the emergency clause on ordinance 1021.
Second. The move and second it, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Arden?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Smith? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now we're ready for resolution number 6321, uh, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 6321, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the budget for 2021 and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The move and second it, is there any discussion?
Uh, just one little piece. We discussed this at the, this is what we discussed at the, uh, budget meeting, is that right? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Any more discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number 6321. The mayor also presents resolution 6421.
Resolution number 6421, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing obsolete or no longer used personal property to be sold at public auction and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Uh, there are possible reprint, uh, misprint. It says East Camden.
Oh, yeah. Right after the last word is in bold type.
Look like... Oh, okay. State's East Camden.
Oh, yes.
Now, the section one...
Of the city of East Camden.
On the now there board.
So, should we just make a motion to approve and then make a motion to amend the ordinance? Okay, amend it, okay.
I make a motion that we amend 6421 and strike the word east.
I second.
All right, the move and second, we have motion to, uh, to amend. Uh, and we're changing, we're taking out East Camden in this particular one. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye. Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. Now, now we're going for a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Is there a motion? Move and properly second it, is there any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye. Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Now, do we need motion to accept or amend it, or that's it? No, that was it.
Ask a question if you could. And I would hope that we would, uh, also be able to publish it on the website or internet or something, so that someone other than just us has copy of what's in place.
I agree. Yeah, this wasn't in the packet that I originally got email to anymore.
It was not, but it is now. And, uh, so, we will get this list on exportcamden.com. Uh, hopefully by, uh, uh, by Monday. We'll have it by Monday. And we will be hosting this particular auction on November the 6th at the protocol building. November the 6th at the protocol building. And you can go online... November 6th at the Port of Orleans, and you can go online on Monday, and you'll automatically find the list of things that will be auctioned by the city of Camden, Frank Department, Police Department, other departments that have courts on here and other areas where we have that auction. November 6th, 9 AM at the Port, at the Port of Orleans.
I would also suggest that there ought to be some kind of time that somebody could inspect some of this stuff or ask questions about it or something, other than just 9:00?
I think the auctioneer is handling, the auctioneer is handling a lot of this stuff for it.
Okay, so they can put that on the thing where they listed, so that if they wanted to look, they need to know the day before or the week before that they could actually see it.
We'll have it all set up the Monday before, and we're going to have signs advertised there. We have Bill Baker as the auctioneer, and he can...
Yes, sir. Will there be a deadline or removal of items if you buy?
Yeah, we hope that any line is there.
We'll have to put something in writing to make sure they know that before they make the purchase.
Those vehicles that don't have a key, my driver's move.
Yeah.
Come on, man. We're trying to make sure that all the vehicles are running when the people get there. The vehicles, we want to make sure they're running, so that we can actually get money for those vehicles and use them in our conference, so if something's not running, sometimes people can convince you that they ought to pay so much less. So, we're trying to make sure everything's in a condition where people will actually pay for it, and we can put that money in our conference.
What happens, is there any...
We'll get paid for that, too. All right. And would you have, you had the flask of ale?
Yes, sir. I requested that be in the agenda, and I didn't see it in the agenda.
Okay. I want to make sure it would be in the agenda for November. I apologize, I, we're having it in here for November 8th. All right, is there any other business?
Mr. Mayor, as we all know, a couple of years ago, I brought forth a proposal for entertainment district in downtown Camden. It was withdrawn to take another look at it. I've had a lot of conversations with people and would like to request that a workshop and public hearing be set up to, for all of us to get it around and look at it before it got brought into a, you know, an actual monthly meeting.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I can set that date with you tomorrow.
That would be perfect.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other business before council tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.